Coming in, we got Mr. Gage looking for the big thumbs up from the back office.
Is that the way it goes?
In the home office, yeah. Not you Dustin, we're actually looking behind. No, yeah.
I must've missed something too, because I didn't remember there being...
Everybody all calm down.
Yeah.
Okay, it is, sorry as usual, we're running a couple of minutes late. We're gonna try and synchronize our clocks maybe next week and see if we can get out here on time, but we'll call our July 28th City Commission meeting to order. Start with a roll call please.
Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
At this time, all who are available, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards or proclamations today, so I'll open up to the citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that's not on the agenda. If you would please give us your name and address. Anyone here for that?
Norman Mantle, West Pleasant Hill Road. Where are we at on discussing on this fireworks ban? Are we, any progress on it being discussed, what you might ban and not ban?
Oh, okay.
I mean, has it, it was mentioned last week at a study session, I'd just like to know when it might...
I think last I knew, and maybe Mr. Gage can tell me, we were kinda still waiting to get some statistics, see how many police calls we had, how many fire calls, just kinda get a general feel for what the calls were. And we've definitely received a lot of people sending letters and calling in and things about it, but I don't know that we've specifically sat down to ban anything or made an indication that that would happen. I think we're really just trying to compile information, maybe compare numbers to last year and see how things, how things were, if there were, you know, more calls, less calls. We discussed maybe just making sure that maybe some things we could do next year to make people maybe more aware of the hours or things like that that could try and take place.
What I'm concerned about is if you start banning stuff, what else are we gonna ban?
Right, yeah, I don't think we've discussed that.
That's what I'm asking if, how far along the discussions have been.
Yeah, I don't know that there's been any discussions of banning anything. I think we actually kind of got to the point where we felt like trying to ban individual fireworks becomes troublesome because a lot of the places will sell the packages and we sorta tend to follow the state law. I think really the only thing we've banned in Salina are those, we talked about last week, the, wherever those lanterns are, they're...
The floating lanterns are really not even a fireworks device, they're just a floating fire.
Yeah, it's really just an open flame, yeah. So, obviously, we were very concerned about those during the drought, really anytime. So, we did ban those, but that's it.
You know, there's also the issue about it makes too much noise. It's distraction, so there's other issues that are gonna come into play here.
Yeah, well, I mean...
And that's why I'm curious how...
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try and...
Yeah, I think we're just waiting on that information, really.
I think we're to the point that I've got some information to combine. I can give you a report next week if you like. I'll try to keep it real brief, but just to give you an idea of the activity that we had, I'm not sure that our activity necessarily truly inaccurately measures the community activity that you hear, and so I think quite honestly, the firsthand information from the residents is probably the best information, but at least you'll have that.
Right. Yeah, now, I would just echo even today, I was at a meeting and I noticed more people are, even the people who are sort of saying, "Oh, the fireworks," I didn't even get the feeling that they were asking for a ban so much as just getting people to adhere to the proper times and maybe look at it, start maybe a little later in the day, I don't know if they felt like 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. So, there was, I haven't heard anybody just, there's maybe been a couple of letters have been out and out banned, but most of the people have been, you know, could we just enforce a little more and make sure people are following the rules?
That's why I wanna know where the progress was, 'cause I will have some input...
Sure.
...if I'm around.
Maybe next week then, Norman. Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else with anything today that'd like to bring before the City Commission that's not on the agenda? Okay.
I'm representing a citizen.
Oh, okay.
That could not make it to this meeting, and I got a call this week from Joan Ratzlof, and I think everyone has a letter, and she wanted to make sure that she had her concerns made known to the commission, and she furnished me with this bag of material that fell into her yard after the July 4th festivities. And this is the letter that she wrote along with the bag of debris. "This is a gallon bag of fireworks debris that I picked up in my backyard and off my back porch after July 4th this year. There is more on my roof and in the gutters. Some of the debris is scorched. I am concerned about the litter and the fire risk. My near neighbor did not shoot anything off, so it came from afar. It was nice not to have mosquitoes for a couple days, but I am concerned about the unknown chemistry of the smoke. In addition, the racket started as soon as sales began. I am concerned about the following problems with the ordinance. It may be largely unenforceable because of difficulty determining where they are used. It has insufficient limits to keep debris on the property of the user and the noise level and duration. It is my wish that the ordinance be rescinded because of widespread noncompliance and extreme noise level. Since when is it okay to celebrate freedom at our neighbors' expense in misery? A town should not have to wholesale tranquilize its pets. Besides, that is not a suitable remedy for all pets. If the ordinance is not rescinded, then I suggest suitable limits on items allowed to be sold and used with frequent retail inspections. Law enforcement should use more than just verbal warnings. In addition, please consider limiting use to the fourth only." Thank you, Joan Ratzlof. And I think that part of what we're looking at is trying to determine where the line exists between fun and the next neighbor's property line. That's the tough one.
Yeah, and I think that she maybe mentioned that it has insufficient limits to keep debris on the property of the user. I think we discussed, actually, it does have within our ordinance that that is supposed to, it's supposed to fall on your property, so I think maybe it's just more of an enforcement issue than anything else, but we obviously appreciate Ms. Ratzlof taking the time to write us and with her concerns, as well as Norman for coming in today. Speaking of meeting, if there are none other, then we'll move on to the consent, I'm sorry, public hearings on items scheduled for a certain time. And thank you for coming today.
Item 5.1, comments on the proposed 2015 budget.
We really just opening this up, Greg, is that... We just really opening this up for public comment, is that really all it is? I mean, that's...
Yeah, Commissioners, we like to do this as we get closer, just to provide opportunity. It's not as if someone doesn't have the opportunity, they always do.
Sure.
Such as Mr. Mantle on the last topic, they can come up and talk about that, but it puts it out in front so that people are aware.
Okay, so is there anyone here with any comments for the proposed 2015 budget? If not, as Mr. Gage said, you'll have opportunity to come. Of course, you can come next week or call any of us at home or... CNN, okay. Do we need any kind of action on that at all? Just reclose that? Okay, we'll close that section and then move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 21st, 2014.
I would ask if there's any item on the consent agenda Commissioner wished to remove or modify. I guess we could modify it, but if we remove it, we won't have much of a consent agenda, so...
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 4-0, and that moves us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 14-10744, establishing zoning regulations governing the siting and placement of wireless telecommunications facilities within the public right-of-way in the city of Salina.
Ordinance number 14-10744 was passed on first reading on July 21st, 2014, including the findings drafted by the city attorney and three minor insertions requested by representatives of Wildflower Communications. Since that time, Wildflower Communications has requested one additional clarification relating to electric meters and breaker boxes, which has been added to Section H4. Is there any discussion on this, or do you wanna specifically point any of that out, maybe? Does that warrant that?
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor, and Commissioners. It is noteworthy that that proposed modification has been made. Further discussion with, relating to this, to the DAS technology brought to the attention of staff, that the language that we had spoke specifically to the dimension of the box, if you will. And as you'll see there in the parenthetic expression that was added, that is excluding ancillary attached electrical equipment, such as electric meter or breaker panel. Those were devices that attached to the box, relating to the box, but did potentially exceed those maximum dimensions. So, that was again prompted by discussion with those desiring to use that or implement the use of that DAS technology. So, that's what prompted the, bringing it back to you for consideration on second reading.
Great. Any more questions for staff on that?
How many boxes are there with this project?
Well, I think probably best in terms of considering this text amendment, just to think in general as opposed to even a particular project. We, as you know, are in discussions with a particular provider that would wish to implement the use of this technology. I don't know if Mr. Fraser, if you recall precisely, Mr. Stack is not, is on vacation this week, or if anyone knows...
My recollection is between 30 and 50, but...
But it could be more.
It could be more, that's initially, and initially, they, you know, if you're in that business, you're gonna go to where the gaps are and where the most benefit is from that investment, so that can change in time as well, but it's somewhere in between those numbers.
And these boxes are pretty much freestanding boxes in right-of-way?
Either freestanding or attached to a pole, mounted to a pole, ground level.
I was just, you know, it just sounded like we were gonna end up with a lot of clutter when this thing's done. And the boxes are not small, they're six feet tall and they're two feet wide, and we do have an allowance in the case of residential areas that people can, will have notice and all that sort of thing, I guess, but I don't know that it will amount to anything.
No, and as you know, that there's a lot of ways to regulate that type of activity and, obviously, franchise, and that's an item for a later agenda, so we gotta be careful not to get too far into that, but as you see here, we have the zoning regulations, which give us an opportunity to address those types of questions, and then the right-of-way management ordinance, in which everything will have to go through that. But quite honestly, if you look around the community today and you look at the various types of boxes that are in place, are put in place by other utilities, you have quite a difference in location. Not a lot of difference in color, you might see green, but otherwise, you're gonna see maybe a stainless steel, something like that, which includes our traffic signal boxes as well, as well as those from the other utilities. You're gonna see those all over town. So, part of what we try to do is, we could put a requirement that's so onerous on all the utilities, and we have to think pretty broadly from a utility perspective, that all of a sudden, you're gonna get a lot of pushback because we'll have more stringent requirements than any other community in the state, including some of our Johnson County communities. So, we're trying to balance and try to be in that same playing ballpark, but yet not go too onerous, and yet recognize that those utilities and that interest in our community is necessary, or it wouldn't be here. We need, we need electricity, we need gas, we need telecommunications as well, they're actually responding to a demand, so we're trying to regulate to the degree we think is reasonable with regards to their needs and those, the way other cities have done it, and quite honestly, beyond how we ever have in the past, whether it's with a DAS service or any other service. The standards you see here take us a step further in many ways, and the management of the right-of-ways is a step further. So, we're trying to find that happy medium the best we can and utilize the processes, the zoning processes specifically for, in this case, it would be potentially a DAS-type service.
I'd like to think that once this project is complete, that people would drive around and hardly notice that things have changed, but I'm wondering if that will be the case. I have a feeling that they'll know that we have a lot of extra boxes sitting on the right-of-way. And it's just a matter of keeping the aesthetic of the city in perspective as well, I guess.
Yeah, and there's a lot of emphasis in here on that aesthetic, color and dimension, location, height, extra poles versus utilization of existing poles, things like that, as it addresses that DAS-type service. So, there's a lot, lot of contemplation of that in the zoning aspect and regulation aspect of this. I, you know, if, there will be folks, there will be people who notice, I would think, if it, it depends on location, if it's in front of your house or near your house, you're probably gonna notice. If it's not, you might not. Different people pay attention to different things as they drive around the community, so it's hard to tell, but I would never say that it would go unnoticed by any means.
See, I would, I would think it'd be less expensive to put these boxes on the ground than it would be to mount them on a pole, perhaps. I don't know that for a fact, but my, my hope is that even if they come to us and say, "Well, we'd rather put these on the ground because it costs us 200 more dollars to put it on a pole," that we could have the flexibility there to say, "Well, I, we would prefer to have it on the pole," because it's less obtrusive.
Yeah, I believe it, I'm pretty sure that's where it leads us to, but they're still, they're still on the ground, you know, supported by the ground and attached to the pole, it's still a ground-level box, it's just at the pole versus maybe a few feet away from the pole, and certainly, we agree. And we have to also, of course, look at the site triangle at intersections as well, if in fact, a location would happen to be in intersection.
Could I ask this again, Mr. Bengtson, to, can you just tell us again what the three minor insertions were that they had requested? And I assume this is, were these, what was the form of these requests? Were they, were they made after our first reading, or were they made prior to that?
Those were in reference to the pre-first reading.
Okay.
If you remember, there were those red line components of the ordinance at your first reading. So, the only, the only change is the one that we've specifically spoken of today.
Okay.
Since first reading.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on ordinance number 14-10744? Okay, CNN, I'll bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 14-10744, establishing zoning regulations governing the siting and placement of wireless communication, telecommunications facilities within the public right-of-way of the city of Salina.
Second.
Have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number 14-10744. Any other discussion? If I could get a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor, Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0, moves us on to 7-2.
Second, 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 14-10740, managing the use and occupancy of the public rights-of-way by utility providers in the city of Salina, Kansas.
Ordinance number 14-10740 was passed on first reading on July 21st, 2014. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any Commissioner comments or questions on this? Any public comment on this issue? CNN, I'll bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 14-10740, managing the use and occupancy of the public right-of-way by utility service providers in the city of Salina.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt ordinance number 14-10740. Any further discussion? If I could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor, Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0, that moves us on to 7-3.
Item 7.3, award the wayfinding signs installation project to Stevens Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $147,500 plus a 5% construction contingency of $7,375 for this contract.
Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The second phase of the wayfinding signage project was re-advertised for three weeks, and the bids were opened on June 3rd. The city received three bidders. One of those was Architectural Graphics Creative Sign Designs and Stevens Contractors. Now, earlier last month, on June 16th, the City Commission awarded the second phase of wayfinding to the two low bidders. Those were creative sign and designs for the materials and architectural graphics for the installation. Now, email correspondence that we had with Architectural Graphics prior to the City Commission award indicated that they had intended to tie their materials and installation bids together with their submission, but that they would still honor the separate installation price that they submitted. However, after the award and prior to the contract being signed, we determined that they would be unable to perform the installation unless they could supply the materials as well. In addition, is it Architectural Graphics did not submit a bid bond. According to the bid documents that the city has, the city requires that we have a, an acceptance within 60 days. That would put us at August 3rd, is as far as these bids would be, would be okay for us to, to be able to work with. The second bidder for the installation was Stevens Contractors. Now, they've been notified of this situation and that they're willing to perform the work to be able to do the installation for us. Based on our past experience with Stevens, they're a qualified contractor and they could do a good job, and staff is satisfied that they could be able to do this work this winter. The completion of the project would be done prior to March 31st. In the capital improvement program, there is $350,000 in the sales tax revenues under gateway signage wayfinding that would pay for this. City staff has identified the following options and recommends option 1. Option 1 is to award the installation project to Stevens Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $147,500 plus a 5% construction contingency of $7,375 for this contract. Option 2 would be to reject all bids and give staff further direction.
Be happy to answer any questions. Any questions for staff?
Just a quick, just a quick refresher, because this obviously came to us quite a while ago. Are some of these wayfinding signs going to be mounted on our new, any of our new lighting poles or anything?
Yes, there would be some.
Okay. And so, is there, was that, was that all part of the contract before, so they're aware of all that, and if any special brackets or anything are taken to...
There shouldn't be any problems with that.
Okay.
Being able to put those things together.
All right.
I think there's some fear there'll be big chrome mounts on our nice black stands.
The banding, the banding that we'll use on that is black banding, so in those cases where we would have those, is that we do black banding on that, powder coated banding. Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this highly charged issue?
[laughing]
Okay, CNN, we'll bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
I move that we award that installation project to Stevens Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $147,500 plus a 5% construction contingency of $7,375 for this contract.
Second.
Motion is second to award the installation project to Stevens Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $147,500 plus a 5% construction contingency of $7,375. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion carries 4-0, that moves us on to development business.
Item 8.1, resolution number 14-7123, changing the official street name of Vortex Avenue to Clay Ridge Court west of Scanlon Avenue.
Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. To give you a brief background of how names are created in the city of Salina, I'll start with, it all begins with the plating process. Whenever a developer comes forward with a new subdivision, the names are limited by the imagination of the developer, and staff's role in that situation is to confirm that the names aren't confusing or create some sort of conflict or are too similar to some other names of other streets in a different area of town. In this particular situation, we have the Airport Industrial Center subdivision, which was platted in 1988, and at that time, there were two streets that were east-west, one Wall Street, which you see at the top of the map, and another, which is labeled as Vortex today, which was Wart Street at the time. In 2005, Vortex Technologies, in conjunction with the Salina Economic Development Corporation, worked together to develop Vortex's manufacturing facility that they have out there today. While going through that process, Vortex Technologies proposed to change the name of Wart Street to Vortex Avenue. And that brings us to the nature of our request today. In the north, I don't know if John can show him the northwest corner of this property here, we have Veris Technologies, which deals with soil sensing, precision soil sensing agricultural equipment. They design and build this type of equipment, and in doing so, their business is highly dependent on the shipping and receiving of goods. And they have a concern that being located on Vortex Avenue may cause issues or confusion with some of their suppliers bringing goods to their site and their shipping and receiving processes. And so, as a result, what they are proposing is to change the name of Vortex Avenue west of Scanlon Avenue to Clay Ridge Court. And this item has had a public hearing with the Plating Commission, and they have recommended approval. Staff has looked at the proposed name and determined that it is dissimilar to other streets and is not a confusing street name, and have no problems with the proposed street name. And so, with that, staff would take any questions that you would have.
Any questions for city staff on this?
How many streets do we have that are one block long?
Good question. I couldn't tell you.
With a certain name.
Yeah.
Too, for sure, yeah.
I think the better question is, how many streets do we have that break in the middle when they're contiguous, like, sort of like that, with, they get two different street names?
Yeah, it is somewhat...
Pretty rare.
Yeah, it is somewhat rare. It's not completely unheard of, it's not something that hasn't happened in the past. Maybe not ideal, having one side of Scanlon Avenue being a different name than the right side, and that's what you're speaking to, I presume.
Right.
And, yeah, that's somewhat unique, but I believe there are a couple instances where that has happened in the city of Salina.
And so, the purpose is to make it easier to find?
The purpose is to make Veris Technologies easier to find for their suppliers, for shipping and transportation purposes, getting their goods in and out of their manufacturing facility.
Okay. I will just say that I, I did appreciate your comment at the first, where the name, the original name is limited by the creativity of the...
Well, sometimes there is some imagination.
What was the street called before?
Walwertz, W-E-R-T-Z, and it was named after an employee of the Airport Authority.
Oh, okay.
And so, they wanted to honor that individual.
I never got a street named after me.
And you see that some, you'll see names that are people names on streets, and a lot of times, they're family members of the developer.
So, it's changed, the name has changed already once before.
Well, not on this particular, this is a new street.
This would be the third name changed for this street.
So, honor is not eternal.
Not in our process.
It is for Lum, Lum Felton Park, it still is, yeah, yeah. I have visions of London here. Do you ever, did you ever drive around London and, the street?
I've never been to London, no.
Right in the middle of the block, new street name. Next block, new street name. I have a hard time thinking that this is gonna be less confusing. I think if you're a UPS driver, you know where Vortex is, you know where Vortex Avenue is, you're looking at a street address, I mean, it'll be interesting to hear from the applicant, they may say, "Look, we think our company name is too close to Vortex, could be a problem." There may be a legitimate reason. As I sit there and think about, as a mail delivery or fire or anything else, it's a heck of a lot easier to remember Vortex Avenue than Clay Ridge. Where's Clay Ridge? Because how many, how many calls, how many deliveries, when you've only got one business or maybe two, at most, three businesses at the end of Clay Ridge Road Lane Court? You don't, what's happening is you're not generating, we all know where Crawford is because there's a lot of activity out, there's a lot of businesses, we hear it over and over again. I tend to think Clay Ridge Court almost seems, you get that one fire call out there, the fire department's going... get that one fire call out there, the fire department's going, "Where's Clay Ridge?" Yeah, I think, I think that, it just feels like it's more confusion to me than, than not. Again, the, the applicant may have, there, there may be some issues already, and there may be a legitimate reason. But for me, it just seems like we're kind of adding confusion here, but...
How many years before GPS picks it up?
Yeah, Google Maps.
That may not even be on GPS.
Yeah, right.
Depends on your GPS, I suppose, right?
Our satellite images are so old, there were probably not even a street there now, but...
And the other, the other question I had too is that, this also begs the question a little bit, um, of the wisdom of naming a street after a business.
Right.
Uh, period. And I don't know if, you know, if, if that should be limited at least that much. If, if there is an opportunity or an option for more than one business to be on a street, that the one business is already there, maybe should not be granted the right to name the business their name.
Well, and then you run into the issue of Edsel Avenue and, uh, you know, businesses that go out of business, and people like, "Why was it ever called this in the first place?"
Right.
I'm, I'm, I think I'm almost more concerned that we can just sort of randomly change street names. I'm thinking Pine Ridge needs to be Aaron's Street.
Well, there are, as, as is laid out in the, in the blue sheet staff report here, there are different ways and different processes, different initiations to, uh, change, change names, but they always go before this body.
When this, when this came before the Plating Commission, was there any discussion to changing Vortex Avenue to Clay Ridge Avenue so that...
Yeah. There was talk of that, but the problem with that is, it's not really an avenue because it's, it's a cul-de-sac. And so, and the cul-de-sac usually is...
I meant, I meant, when you have, when you have a break there, you have...
Change all of Vortex, you mean?
Well, yeah, because I could see where maybe, and you may be able to speak to this. When we have that normal situation, is it generally, and is it generally Vortex Avenue and then Vortex Court?
Well, it could be, but in this particular case, when it was, uh, Vortex Avenue to begin with, you could argue about the shortsightedness of having an avenue that dead ends into a cul-de-sac. But at the time, it was considered a, a continuous road, and so...
I'm entertained. I really am.
No, I'm just kidding. I mean, if, if the conversation is confusing, is confusion, would it make sense to rename the Vortex Avenue part that is remaining Clay Ridge Avenue?
I don't know that this came up in, in the deliberations, but a recurring concern when you change a street name like that is having to change letterhead and mailing addresses for the existing businesses that are already on the street and have made use of the existing address.
All right. Any more questions for staff? Maybe, I'd say, maybe we'll hear from the applicant. He's probably got a real good reason, a legitimate reason that'll make this all make more sense.
Mayor, I have a quick question, if I may. Dustin, you mentioned in the staff report, you didn't see a public safety reason to deny the request. I'm, I'm presuming that this went in front of police and fire departments from a dispatching of emergency medical people and police personnel and fire personnel, and that they've reviewed that, and it indicated that from a public safety perspective, they didn't see any concerns?
That's a valid question. And unfortunately, Mr. Andrews, the one who processed this particular agenda item, um, I, I can tell you that we did go through a public hearing process with the Plating Commission and had public notification, whether or not, or how involved, I should say rather, are fire personnel and police personnel were. I, I'm not recalling.
And the reason I ask that is because our, our, our number one purpose in street naming is to ensure public safety personnel can get where they need to get there on time, uh, as quickly as possible. And so, if they're comfortable, I mean, again, from a staff perspective, it's really not an issue for us as much as, as an open-ended issue. But I would like to make sure that that did occur. So if, if, I don't know if anyone else is aware of their review.
If we make a motion today, we can, we can hinge it on that. Is that correct? Is that a possibility to make sure that's contingent upon law enforcement and fire protection approval, or...
I would probably recommend if, if, if we don't know, to just postpone it a week, just so we are sure, rather than a contingency-type motion. But I would defer to Greg on, from a legal perspective, if he feels that would be appropriate.
Contingencies on ordinance considerations are a complicator that should probably be avoided.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that police, fire, and engineering both, with the addressing portion, have been notified and talked to and discussed this process with them. Anytime there's a name change, because they do need to enter into their system as well as has been mentioned before.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's been any negative response back from either one of those.
Usually is the case, I think. Usually, something like this is kind of, Mr. Andrews has been real good about...
Yeah, and I, I assume that to be the case in being built into the, uh, the system, but thought it'd be good to make sure.
And they have been notified then, and no, no red flags. Okay, maybe we'll hear from the applicant. He's probably got a good reason for all this. He can make us feel more comfortable. Thank you, Dustin.
Larry Kerr, and I, uh, one of the partners in Veris Technologies, so appreciate the chance to, to get a chance to talk about this. Uh, I think some of the things I've heard is, uh, you know, it may not be as much with delivery in the postal system as customers coming in from around the world, um, kind of seeing, they come off Interstate 135, get on Waterwell, and the first thing they'll see is, um, Vortex, and then it's like, "Oh, we must be here." So there's concern that there'd be confusion, confusion for customers coming, coming in. I do think there was also, uh, you know, um, we, we definitely didn't want it related tying back to Veris, because we think there'll be other, other businesses on that street, and it doesn't seem right to tie them so tightly to Veris. As far as the Clay Ridge, um, we do soil. Kansas has a lot of farming. We wanted something that had to kind of tie back into the, the soil. And, um, so, um, we, we do think it will be less confusing for, for our customers that are coming in that, uh, that, when they see, you know, if you've been out there, uh, Vortex, and they're getting bigger, they're a nice company, but they do have a pretty big presence right, right there as you come off. And so it seemed to us at least that it would make sense to break, break that little, little, uh, area off by itself. And there's room for other businesses on there too. But, uh, and it's, it's a nice time to do it where you only have, uh, one, one business that you have to talk about. I know how to address other questions that you might have, but I think it was primarily to, to make sure that customers coming in, and we're, we, uh, we got a nice conference room. You've seen the plans there. And, and we, we expect, uh, um, quite a few people coming into Salina to see that.
You would anticipate then, people coming to your business would be, come, not be entering off of Centennial Road, but to the road west of that?
Right, right.
Okay. Scanlon, is that Scanlon?
Enter off, uh, they'll come down Interstate 135, get off at Waterwell, and then take the, uh, second, second road going.
Okay. And is there wayfinding there at that intersection for your businesses or anything? Is that all part of the signage plan out there?
Excuse me, what was the question again?
Any wayfinding there at that intersection that, that...
It's a little weak right now.
Is it weak?
But anyway, uh, that's, uh, some comments I have, and, uh, would appreciate you approving it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
I think, I think the discussion was kind of less about what the merits of this particular one, but I think just in general, when you're talking about one section of road, changing the name to another section of road, that, that, uh, that there's some sort of consistency. And I know that that, my, my comment was just directed toward that is, is that maybe Clay Ridge Road is, is a, is an adequate, or, or avenue would be.
One more comment. I, um, I've kind of wondered that myself at times, and, uh, I have a son that lives on, uh, Belmont, or Belmont, uh, Malloy. The street right to the north of it is Sunset going to the west and some other street going.
Minneapolis or something, and one of those.
Actually, I use it as a landmark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, there are different, different arguments for every, yeah, every position.
Yeah. I, yeah, I don't think they'll get too confused. GPS kind of takes care of most of that. But it's, like I said, it's a little entertaining. Cities get older, you almost wonder how streets, now you know why London gets the way it is. But, um...
I, my, my only hesitation, um, not necessarily with this particular application, but with the process itself, is I'm, I'm putting this kind of in the same category as curb cuts. And how many do you really want in, in, along a stretch? And, um, to me, having one company on a, on a block, and it's one name, and then the next block's another company, and it's another name, um, just doesn't sound consistent to me, I guess. That it should, should be more consistent back and forth. And, and maybe that just goes back to, well, avoiding company names altogether. But I don't know how the collective wisdom of, from commission to commission, might, you know...
Well, this is by far the smartest.
Remember that, or, you know.
Yeah. So I don't know. Or the most, uh, detailed.
I am assuming there are no, there are no naming rights to streets. Like, that wasn't part of any sort of naming rights.
No, but that brings up an interesting consideration for the future.
How much longer am I in office?
I, I think, I say that in jest. What Mr. Robb indicated is true. If, if, if that were a through street with multiple blocks and different businesses or homes, or whatever that might be, you certainly wouldn't want to change that. And I think Mr. Scrag indicated that as well.
Yeah.
Creates a lot of disruption. In this case, because it's, it's really undeveloped, you don't have that disruption, so you really don't have to deal with it. Now, later, if there were multiple businesses there and you had a name request change, I think it'd be more difficult because of that very factor. Um, so really, probably the only factor of consideration with this one is just simply a street that changes at the intersection, uh, which is tempered somewhat because it is a cul-de-sac street.
Well, and, and not to prolong this anymore, but just if you were to zoom out of that map, it looks like perhaps Vortex Avenue and Wall Avenue at one time were going to serve a loop, and it probably would have had one name.
Yeah, if it, you know, if I could start the, uh, street naming of the community from scratch, I would see where Vortex lined up. Of course, you, you notice that, uh, it does end there. There's one block. Um, but, uh, I'd go further east, see where it lines up in our system. And if it lined up with another street that continues, I would keep it consistent with that. But quite honestly, I'm not sure I've been to a city that does that very well.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I tend to lend support to this because of the, of the cul-de-sac there. And, and Avenue does seem like an odd name, uh, for a, for a cul-de-sac, yeah, for a dead-end street. Avenue just doesn't seem to fit, so, uh, I tend to be a little more supportive of this. And, and since it's not rampant in our city, I can only think of that example that, that, uh, the applicant gave, uh, that's the, that's about the only one I can, there might be one, maybe one or two others, right? That's about the only one I can recall, but, good enough point. Any public comment on this at all? Any thoughts? Anybody want to get in on the fun? No? Not at all? It is fun. Okay, I'll bring it back for possible action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 147123, changing the official name of Vortex Avenue to Clay Ridge Court west of Scanlon Avenue.
Second.
Motion as second to adopt resolution number 14-7123, changing, uh, Vortex Avenue to Clay Ridge Court. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries four zero. That takes us on to other business. Any other business from anyone?
Mayor, I can't resist the temptation to mention, I do think the most, if I ever plat a subdivision, I probably won't, but I do think the most prudent approach was taken by that subdivision that includes Max.
Oh, yeah.
Carl, or Max, Ralph, Carl, and Albert.
And Roach.
Well, Roach would not have been included in the commissioners' names, but naming them after the commissioners is a good way to...
I've never figured out why people don't understand how to grease the wheels of government. I've never, you know, I've, I've said it since the Plating Commission, Aaron's Way. It just sounds right. It just sounds right. So, well, if there's no other business, I would point out, uh, quite a successful, uh, weekend, I think, for Salina with the lead sled spectacular. I actually didn't make it over to the park, but saw lots of cars, uh, driving around town. The business Salina people presented. I think it was a really successful show. I haven't heard final numbers on anything, but sure seemed crowded. Sure was a lot of neat-looking cars driving around town, and, and, uh, hope they had fun, and hope they come back next year. I think there was maybe a little traffic jam on whatever that Markley Road there for a little bit. Traffic slowed down a little bit, but they were quick to get signs out and route people around, and there you go. So, really, really good time. And like I said, I like seeing all those people in, in the hotels and the restaurants, and I don't mind waiting in line when I hear that cash register ring. And so it was nice to have them here, so. Okay.
All right. Welcome back, Mike. And I'm making motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion as second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.